All right, what I started by saying, Brocketh Yahweh, Brocketh Yahweh, Rashai, Brocketh Yahweh, Brocketh Yahweh Rashai. Bahshim Yahweh Rashai, Bahshim Rukakwadash. Double honors to the elders and apostles that great most, so that torment is doctrine and truth is sincerity. Shalom unto elect, the heavenly father's name is Yahweh, which means he is or he exists. Bahshim in the name of his only begotten son, who the world internally calls Jesus Christ, we know his name to be Yahweh Rashai, which means he is the deliverer, he is the savior for the Hebrew Israelites and the pedigree of your father. Bahshim in the name of the Rukakwadash, which means the holy spirit that's able to give us the knowledge, wisdom and understanding of who we are, which are the true Hebrew Israelites. You're so-called Negro, so-called Latino, so-called Native American, or other speckled bird. Looking like the other nations in your spirit bear witness with our spirit that we are the children of Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai. Then you could be one of the elect, shalom. We've been discontinued from our heritage because we went all falling at the false gods and false idols. Now following the law such a commandments that was given to us by our forefathers and because of those offenses, we were sent into captivity. But through our Lord Yahweh Rashai, Hamashiach being that perfect sacrifice in the flesh to the heavenly father. He's been given all power to be able to sit on the right-hand side of the heavenly father Yahweh. To be able to open the seals of this book, to be able to give the understanding to the disciples, apostles, the prophets and the men on down. To be able to wake up the tabernacle David before descent destruction. And with that knowledge, wisdom, understanding, we're able to know who our oppressor is, which is Esau Edom. Which is the so-called white man today, which is known as Esau in the scriptures. Esau means wasted way he is, and they are the biblical Eden mice that are set up for a great destruction. But in the latter days, they would have the fatness of earth, control of the monetary system. To be able to deceive the nations through their enchantments, through their sorcery, and they would rule with the great sword. And they would come down with great wrath because they would know that they would have but a short time. But the Lord was sent forth again, his holy spirit, to be able to give the understanding of the mysteries of the evils that are gonna be in the latter days, okay? And if we repent and turn back to the Lord, the Lord will be able to save his very elect. Because the only, the Lord is only coming back for his very elect, the remnant, the hundred and forty-four thousand. Okay, and the one-third, the woman and child that will believe in Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai and turn back to him. Okay, so this lesson's gonna be centered around the fifteen-minute cities. Okay, which we know these are gonna be cities that um are gonna be um, you know, watched, you know, by Big Brother. You know, cameras everywhere, um you'll be tracked and traced, what you buy and what you sell. Okay, um in this type of society, this dystopian society, and this is what's being played out. This is Esau Edom's agenda to have a new world order, a Novus Oris Aquarium, which is on the back of your dollar bill. A one-world military, a one-world government, a one-world religion, and that one-world religion is you bowing down to the beast system. Okay, and following their philosophies and their image, worshiping their image, their man-on-man, woman-on-woman, you know, Transformer, bestiality, pedestry, emerging man with robot. Okay, uh society and be branded with that mark, that stigma, that physical mark branded inside of your hand or your forehead to be able to control your buying and selling. Okay, and that will be raided by a social credit system, okay? That will have, um if you say anything against the president or against the regime, against their government, their unelected officials, then you will be um you know, at a lower grade and eventually you won't be able to do things in society. And this is where it's headed to, that's why you see um certain, you know, laws, unrighteous decrees being passed. Okay, for um so-called hate speech, you know, they're they're cracking down on anybody speaking against the regime. Okay, and anybody speaking against regime is gonna be called a dissident and put in these different camps. Okay, which are gonna be um these fifteen-minute cities, okay, FEMA camps, fifteen-minute cities. You know, um where people are gonna be placed that um in this type of society. Okay, and we're seeing them being formed, okay? And what you have is you have a sedition against the government, against these fifteen-minute cities. So let me read a little bit of this article, it says, it's actually the gateway to digital IDs and CBDC, central bank and digital currency. So the CBDC is um taking away the paper dollar, get the dollar that folds and bringing in uh the digital yoke. Bringing in that digital yoke um of the infrastructure of the CBDC, okay, everything digital. That's why you have uh Pedro Joe that signed the executive order fourteen zero six seven. Okay, taking away the paper dollar, bringing in the digital currency, okay? And this is all leading to what the mark of the beast, okay, the physical mark. It says uh CBDCs allow bankers and or governments to freeze your bank account because you have happened, because you happen to peacefully and lawfully protest, express your disagreement with government policy. Does anyone remember the truckers convoy in Ottawa, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two? When the government of Canada invoked emergency acts and froze the private bank accounts of law-abiding citizens? Yeah, because that's Esau Edom uh doing a diligent search, let me get a couple scriptures. This is Isaiah ten and one. Isaiah ten and one, woe which means destruction unto them that decree unrighteous decrees and their right grievousness which they have prescribed. So when they had that trucker convoy up there in Canada, or what they doing, they were freezing people's bank accounts because of their um, you know, their uproar towards the government, okay, because of the lack of um, you know, lack of funding or the lack of um, you know, support that the the people had, okay, from their government. Okay, because of the thing that was going on, you had a, you know, that thing that happened a couple years ago. And what you're seeing is the trucking industry is also falling, okay? And the truckers are uh a necessity for these these uh um these uh stores. Okay, if you don't have the truckers, you don't have the trains, okay, then you're not gonna have food. Because these these trains, Saki, these stores only have, you know, three days worth of food. That's why, that's why the Lord said there's gonna be a great famine, okay? And we're seeing that also happening with these different um people looting these stores. They don't realize that once these stores keep getting looted, okay, there's not gonna, they're not gonna wanna set up shop anymore. You have a lot of stores that are what, beginning to close, which is also prophecy. Isaiah ten and one in the N E T, those who enact unjust policies, so these are unjust policies. Okay, that are being acted um throughout the four corners of the earth, but particularly Babylon the Great. Because Babylon the Great, where there's gonna be a great destruction, okay? The Babylon is known as that uh great whore that fornicates with these different nations, okay? And they are the head of what the beast system, okay? And then they're joined unto what NATO and NATO, America and NATO have gathered these different nations to follow their philosophy. Okay, the philosophies of their new world order, the Novus Oris Aquarium, okay? The the central bank and digital currency, um you know, digital yoke being controlled by what the blockchain, which will be centralized, which will be the new world order, okay? But the Lord is gonna again, that's why the Lord sent forth his prophets to be able to heal this devil and put him in his place and expose his wickedness, okay? Isaiah ten and one in the N E T, those who enact unjust policies are good as dead. Those who are always instituting unfair regulations, and that's what they're always doing, okay? When you go to a um, you know, a neighborhood and um put, you know, um barium, aluminum in a in a neighborhood and then put GMO foods in the neighborhood and then uh put forth certain laws that if you get in trouble, okay, then you go to a prison cell, which is a concrete jungle, okay? Because of uh something, uh because of a a small crime or petty crime, they created the the neighborhood to be horrible. Okay, where people have a lack of jobs, okay, um you know, and that creates where you start to have um, you know, survival of the fittest mentality, okay? And this is all through what, unrighteous decrees, and the list goes on of 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 uh, you know, unrighteous decrees they have done. Okay, and one of them is the um, you know, you know, the how they target our people, okay? They target people in our neighborhoods and then their people are able to not be in trouble like others, okay? This is Psalm sixty-four and five, and they do a diligent search on how they can be able to do this to people. It says, Psalm sixty-four and five, they encourage themselves in the evil matter they commune of laying snares, privy they say, who shall see them? So that convoy, because I also, I believe that came to Washington DC, okay, with the truckers, that was all set up so they can be able to create a a man-made famine, okay? These are orchestrated by Esau Edom, the so-called white man, by a thing called the Hegelian dialectic, which is pressure from below, pressure from above. Okay, these things don't just happen out of nowhere, okay? They're they're set up, they're planned, um you know, um you know, years in advance, how they how they can be able to um again enchant the people, okay? How they can be able to push sorcery on the people, okay? Because again, people are in a in a um a sense of uh darkness, okay? Because if you're not in this light, then you're actually in darkness, okay? Psalm sixty-four and six, they search out iniquities, they accomplish a diligent search, both their inward thought of have you, everyone. Saki, the inward thought of everyone of them and their heart is deep, yeah, so their heart is deep. And they're pushing forth what cunning, uh cunning uh wiles of the devil. On how they can be able to entrap people to be in the snare of uh trusting in your government and trusting in and the resources that they're giving you, which the resource they're giving you. Um you know, you will own nothing and be happy, you know, uh you can eat bugs, okay? Um we'll give you, you know, food, water and shelter, we'll even give you a UBI, universal basic income. But you have to um, you know, take this device ultimately, and this is what this all uh leads back to, all these different um things that are going on, okay? When you look at the news, it's just, there's things everywhere, and that shows you that the Lord is doing a great work. Second Corinthians two and eleven, lest Satan should get advantage of us, for we are not ignorant of his devices. So we're not ignorant of his schemes and his plots, because the Lord has given us the breath, has given us the light to be able to see um the wiles of the devil, okay? And he's what, devising iniquity upon his bed by these different um, you know, psyops that are happening, okay? And one of them is that that Tupac uh um Kefi D uh BS, okay? That's a, that's an enchantment to get our people back in that that thuggy spirit, okay, which is nothing but a deity. Micah two one one, woe unto them, so woe means destruction unto them that devise iniquity and work evil upon their beds. When the morning is light, they practice it because it is in the power of their hands. So they've been given power on the left-hand side, who gave them that power? Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai, cuz the Lord rules in what the kingdom of men, okay? And the iniquity that they're pushing is the sin upon sin, okay? So they think of evil thought in their bedchamers and then they go to, in the morning, they go to their laboratories or they go to their think tanks and then they brainstorm together with other um constituents, other people that are just like them, their same flock. On how they can be able to push it on the people, okay? And that's what this um, these fifteen-minute cities are, okay? And what are they doing? They're taking these lands by violence, okay? These certain lands where people were living off the grid, okay? And now you have certain, certain events that happen to their houses and things like that. Where um, you know, with with these different uh heart machines that they have, these different uh dew uh weapons, you know, direct energy weapons where people have to move out of the land and then what, come to these different cities? Because these cities are gonna be what, death zones, okay? And if you're, if you're not um uh have, and if, and also you're not gonna be able to go into certain cities, okay? Second Ezra's fifteen, okay, where um if you don't have the credentials, okay? With far as that mark, then you're not gonna be able to go into the cities. And even when you go into these cities, it's gonna be like Jomaji and the purge, okay? Far as the, there's gonna be beasts in the streets, there's gonna be um, you know, military martial law, okay? That's what uh Russia, they're gearing up for, okay? They're doing a um, right now they're doing an exercise, well, actually I believe it's, it's either today or tomorrow. Let's see, yeah, okay, so I believe it was, I believe it was yesterday. So today they actually have the the certain test on the phones, okay? But uh yesterday, you know, Russia had a test far as them engaging in full mobilization, as if there was a martial law, okay? These tests are not being done for no reason, okay? They're redone because this is where the the um, where the times are headed to, this is actually prophecy. This is Micah two and two in the N L T, when you want a piece of land, you find a way to seize it. When you want someone's house, you take it by fraud and violence, you cheat a man of his property, stealing his family's inheritance. And that's what they've done throughout the four quarters of the earth, okay? But particularly America, because America was what, nothing but Jake, okay? You had the northern tribes that were already over here, Isak, Isakar, uh Ruben, okay? And Gad, they were already in this land, and what happened, Esau Edom came and what took this land by fraud. And now the little lands that people do have, what are they doing? They're coming in, buying the land, okay, um you know, making it where the farmers can't farm anymore, paying them not to farm. Uh certain droughts happen, uh certain uh, you know, floods happen, okay? And they're taking these different lands because they want to have people in these fifteen-minute cities, okay? And let me, um I got a little video and it explains it more, I did a video about this lady. Um and she's a, you know, she's an insider and she's explaining what this is all about, okay? And they, and they do this, um they put these people out there to tell on themselves, okay? When you read, um I'll just get it over here, when you read um certain scriptures, it says that they shall have their tongue fall upon their own um their own head, okay, roughly paraphrasing, far as they're gonna say what they're doing. That's part of their oath, you know, to the shaitan is that they have to say um what they're, what they're doing. This is Joel fifteen and uh six, Joel fifteen and six, it says, Joel fifteen and five in the N L T, it says, your sins are telling your mouth what to say. Your words are based on clever deception, yeah, their words are based on clever deception because these fifteen-minute cities are based on um, you know, green zones as 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 being, you know, happy. You know, it's gonna be easier, you know, you have your, you have your um, you know, you have your mall right there, you work right there. You have all your family right there, everything, you don't have to leave, okay? And if you wanna leave out of that fifteen-minute city, then you're gonna have to have what? A certain level of of credits to be able to leave the city, and that would be what your carbon footprint, okay? And so they're revealing what's going on, Joel fifteen and six in the N L T, it says, your own mouth condemns you, not I, your own lips testify against you, so their own lips are testifying against themselves. Because this lady is an insider, I believe her name is Christina Anderson, okay? And she is an insider of these elites, but she's coming out with the truth. And they do this to have controlled opposition, because they want people to follow um a certain ideology or they want to follow in these certain groups, so they can be able to Revelation twelve, they can be able to uh be accuser like brethren. They can be able to in the Greek categorize and put you in these different categories, okay? So they can have, you know, so they can, when they come down with great wrath, they can say, hey, they didn't follow the law, okay? That which they don't follow either.
City mean basically a neighborhood where you can reach everything you need within a fifty
Saki.
Fifty minutes city mean basically a neighborhood where you can reach everything you need within a fifteen-minute footwork. Doctor, grocery store and so forth. However, if you now fancy another store and it does not happen to be in your neighborhood, you won't be going to that store anymore. Total controls, what we're talking about. Once they decide you're no longer allowed to leave your fifteen-minute immediate area, they don't have to fence it in or anything. It will be done via digital ID.
With the social credit system.
Something like that, yes. And there's pilot project already going on in Bologna, it's called the Bologna Wallet, and in Vienna, it's called the Vienna Token. It's voluntary for now, and it's only pretty much enticing people to get some tickets for a little less or something like that to go to theater, something like that. But soon there will be a time, you don't have a choice anymore. You have to have a digital green certificate, this QR code, whatever, and then they will tell you where you can go, what you can do and what you can and cannot do.
Yeah, Christina Anderson, okay, she's an insider. And as you saw, they said they're doing, they're doing different pilot programs, which is them doing a diligent search. And then they were speaking about the QR code, okay, what's the QR code, Revelation thirteen and sixteen? Okay, they're forming and they're fashioning the society that where you have to bow down to the beast system, okay? And the Lord has given a warning through what the servants, the prophets, that these things are gonna be mandated. Now she did say one thing, that you're not gonna have a choice, yeah, there is gonna be a choice, okay? Whether you choose righteousness or you choose evil, okay? There is gonna be a choice, okay? And the people that that choose um to um baton to the system, okay, they're not of the elect. Which was already, you know, predestined from the foundation that you were gonna take it anyway, okay? But far as them forcing it down your throat, that's not gonna happen, but they're gonna fashion it. Revelation thirteen and sixteen, and he calls it all those small, great, rich and poor and free and bond to receive a mark in their right hands or in their foreheads, so that word causet, okay? Goes into the Greek word poeio, okay, which is to form into fashioning, that's how they're making the differences, that's how they're making this society. Where they're forming and fashioning it, that if you don't have the understanding of Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai and the understanding of these scriptures, okay, you're gonna think there is no way out.
Strong G forty-one sixty, poeio, poeio.
You're gonna think there is no way out, okay? It says, to make, okay, things made to produce, construct, form, fashion. So that's how they're fashioning their society, the dystopian society, which is the Novus Oris Aquarium. This is the heathen raging, raging, causing commotion, okay? Stirring up the people to uh be in fear, okay? To to uh make drastic cause, okay, and to what, trust in their government, okay? To be authors of, to cause, to make ready, to prepare, and they're preparing these uh fifteen-minute cities. They're preparing them and they're setting them up for people to be in them. Look at what's going on in China, look what's going on in Australia, look what's going on in Sweden, okay? A lot of these societies are already have a lot of the uh the twenty thirty agenda, the sustainable development agenda that they want. Okay, to have your children raised by the government, okay, GMO foods, um you know, um, you know, a carbon footprint. Okay, um a social credit score, um facial recognition, you know, through the computers, through Big Brother watching you. Okay, so a lot of these are already here, okay? But now they're actually gonna start really enforcing it, okay, mandating it, okay? And if you don't comply, then you will have no, um if you don't comply, then you will be put in these different camps, okay? Which will be these, you know, different fifteen-minute cities, you know, however uh they do it, you know, I believe the, you know, just as a man, the fifteen-minute city is more for the people that are actually gonna bow down to the beast system, okay? But there's gonna be a form of it far as in different cities. You already have where of the certain places you you um, you know, they don't use cash anymore, where they, everything is beginning to become digital, okay? And where you go to the airport, they're using facial recognition, so there's a form of it. But in the fatness of the sufficiency, they shall be in straits, okay? And this mark right here is something physical, okay, the Greek word kragma, okay? Which is something like a rice grain embedded inside your hand or your forehead, okay? And that will um be used by the instrument, the kroks, to be able to put inside of you, to implant inside of you, okay? And that that um, a kragma will have a grafo, which is information, information to be able to track you. And this is something that's physical, okay? Revelation thirteen and seventeen, and that no man might buy or sell, save he had the mark or the name of the beast or the number of his name. Okay, so buy goes into the word um, goes in the word uh allegor, I believe, let me, let me get that, just make it correct. Showing you that this is something what, physical, okay? Let me go onto the root word of that, let's see.
Strong G fifty-eight, agara.
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 Okay, agara, and that's in the root word, Greek fifty-eight, to assemble especially your people, okay? Um elections, okay, trials, yeah, buying and selling, okay? You're buying and selling, okay, all kinds of business, okay? That's where what um, that's what where the mark is gonna be, everywhere where there's commerce, and this is gonna be worldwide. Everywhere where there's economy or commerce, okay, there's gonna be the market of beasts, all kinds of business, marketplace, street, okay? Buying and selling, showing you that it's something physical to buy and sell, and the mark is physical. And you have to have spiritual discernment that it's physical, okay? Okay, it says, and the number of the beast and the number of his name, okay? And that, it says, here is the wisdom, let him have understanding, count the number of the beast, for the number of a man and his number is six hundred three score six. So again, yeah, that number of the beast is a man, and that's Esau Edom, okay? And that's the Roman Empire being um, the Roman Empire being uh the deadly wound being healed. Which is America is spearheading the charge and you have NATO joined unto them, that beast system. And they gathered these different heathen nations to consult on what, following the image, worshiping the image, okay? And to what, take that mark, which is that cha-sta-sigma, okay, in the Greek, okay? Which goes into the anointed on the left-hand side, crossing you out with their philosophies and having their mark, which is their stigma embedded inside your hand or your forehead, pricked or branded inside of you, something that's physical, okay? Which would be um, and how they would be able to scan you is either with that, like she said, the QR code, okay? Which is newer, but also what, the UPC code, the universal product code, which is, you know, just like you buy something and they scan it, now you would be the actual product, okay? And that's what the, that's what it's headed into, far as the the type of society and what wisdom is required to understand these things, okay? And we're not supposed to what, seal it up and hide it from um, hide it from the people. We're supposed to make it public and make it be known, okay? Going back to this article, it says fifteen-minute cities are wolves and sheep's clothing. Don't you believe that the countless stores spewing forth from twenty-four-seven bases from the elitist capture mainstream media, all claiming to have your best interests at heart? We have been burned too many times, in reality, twenty-four-seven surveillance through the internet of things inside your home, five G LED, streetlights outside monitoring and tracking and recording everything, that's right. Because that's the the causing, that's the poeio uh that they're causing, okay? This is um, this is Psalms two and one, why did the heathen rage and the people imagine a vain thing? So the heathen is what, starting what, Esau Edom, Psalms eighty-three, that crafty counsel that are consulting to hide the hidden ones, okay? And the people imagine a vain thing, so the people are actually our own people, okay? They're they're down with the beast system, they're down with the new world order, okay? Because they have gotten riches or they've gotten um a certain status and they wanted to be here. And ultimately it's because they are defying against Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai, and ultimately it's because they are a two-third, they're not of the elect, okay? And that vain thing is what, their new world order, okay? Their new world order, so they're causing commotion, they're causing um, you know, uh different uh, you know, uh uh things to happen, different psyops, you know, different uh shootings, you know, different uh famines, okay? Um you know, different events far as with the with the um weather, okay? These heathen are raging because they are at their last point, where they know that they have but a short time, so all these things are happening at once, okay? Psalms two and two, the kings of the earth set themselves and rulers take town, Saki, take counsel together against Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai and against this annoying saying, let us break their bands of thunder and cast away their courts from us. And that's what they're doing by implementing um the mark of the beast, okay? By having the structure, because they wanna cut our bands far as our ties to Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai with that device, okay? So these different heathen nations are all meeting up, they meet up in the what, the Davos meetings, uh the Bilderberg meetings, okay? Um you know, uh um the COP twenty-seven meetings, all these meetings are set up on how they can be able to implement um their digital um you know, new world order, okay? Because all the nations have the same ideas, it's just that they're fighting who's gonna be at the top, who's actually gonna be in control. But all these heathen nations are fighting over it, Russia, America, China, okay, North Korea, Iran, all Saudi Arabia, they're all aligning you know, with one another to what, fight against the Mossai ultimately. Because when, and they all want to have what, this chip, okay, embedded inside your hand or your forehead, okay? To cut the bands off, it says, but the Lord said, right, Psalms two and four, he that sitteth in the heaven shall laugh, the Lord Yahweh Rashai shall have him in derision. Yeah, the Lord's gonna have him in derision, okay? Cuz it seems like they're gonna be able to do a lot of things, but this is all prophecy, because there is a balance that this devil cannot pass, okay? That he will not pass, right? Because the Lord controls everything, Joel fourteen and five, seeing the days are determined, the number of his months are with thee. Thou hast appointed a balance that he cannot pass, yeah, because um Esau Edom, and how do you know that he's not gonna pass a certain point? Because he's exposed, he's out in the open, even everyday, everyday person in the world knows, they they call him the elite or they call him the Illuminati or they call him whatever, okay? But they're biblical Eden mice, they are the wicked, okay? Let me go back to this, yeah, so twenty-four uh seven basis, yeah, so this is leading to right here, okay? Jeremiah fifteen and three. Jeremiah fifteen, where there's gonna be what, a martial law, let's start from um two. This is Jeremiah fifteen and two, and this is what the prophets are gonna be saying in that day, okay? And what we're saying right now, far as the things that are gonna be happening, because we're giving you the warning through the power Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai that there's gonna be um great destruction, okay? And to what, return back to the Lord, this is Jeremiah fifteen and two, and it shall come to pass, if they say unto thee, whether shall we go forth, then thou shalt tell them, thus said the Lord Yahweh Bahshim Yahweh Rashai. Such as for death to death, as such as for sword to sword, as such as for famine to famine, as such as for captivity to captivity. And captivity to captivity are these different uh FEMA camps that they have, or these fifteen-minute cities. Famine to famine, cuz the stores are gonna be closed, sword to sword, because people are gonna be fighting over uh the resources or the lack thereof, resources, and there's gonna be what, a lot of deletions, okay? Cuz what, people have walked in great pride, so the Lord is bringing what, great misery. This is um Serac thirty-nine. Well, I'll get this one too, Serac thirty-nine and twenty-eight, there be spirits that are created for vengeance, which on their fury lay on sore strokes. In the time of destruction, they pour out the force and appease the wrath of him that made him. So everybody's gonna be fighting over food, water and shelter, okay? What you see now, where people go to the store, imagine when there, there is no store, okay? Okay, which you see now, where people go to the store, imagine when there there is no store, okay, the store is closed. Okay, that's when a lot of people are gonna bow down to the beast system, okay, where they're gonna go right down to the government. We we saw the thing happen a couple of years ago where people just went in willingly, and now what happened? They they gone, okay? And those spirits created for vengeance are what Esau Edom, okay? One of them is Esau Edom, okay, and also what the the two-third jakes that are gonna be out there. Fire and hail, famine and death, all these were created for vengeance, yeah, because the Lord said he would come back in the third for the third, fourth generation of those that hate him. Okay, and you're seeing what the different fires that are happening. You're seeing the different uh storms that are happening, the different tempests. Okay, you're seeing the beginning of famine and death, great judgment, okay? Teeth and wild beasts and scorpions, serpents and sword, sword pushing the wicked to destruction. Yeah, so that's what's gonna be happening. Martial law is gonna be implemented in these different cities, okay, um. You know, the the beasts that were in the field, you know, they were in the wilderness. Now they're being pushed to these different cities because they don't have food, okay? Thou shall rejoice in the commandment, and thou shall be ready upon the earth, and when need is, when the time has come, they shall not transgress his word. Yeah, because the Lord controls everything, okay? Uh, the Lord is omnipotent. Isaiah forty-five and seven, the Lord creates the light and also creates the darkness, okay? Yeah, thirty-three, all the works of the Lord are good, and he will give every needful thing in due season. And therefore praise the Lord with the whole heart and mouth and bless the name of Yahabashimashai, and that's what we should be doing. Blessing the Lord with our whole heart that we even have this understanding and and pray to the Lord Yahabashimashai, take not that Holy Spirit from us. Okay, because, and it's here, you know, it's here. This is second Ezra's eight and fifty, for many great miseries shall be done unto them in the latter time that shall dwell in the world because they walked in great pride. Yeah, they walked in great pride. They think that what, nothing is gonna happen, okay, when the Lord is sending forth what a great destruction. And it's the Lord that's doing it. It's not nobody else, but he uses uh, you know, uh men to be able to uh bring forth his order. This is Isaiah thirteen eleven, I will punish the world for their evil and the wicked for their iniquity. I will cause the arrogance of the proud to cease. I will lay low the hottness of the terrible, okay, that's starting with Esau Edom, but also anybody that's joined unto Esau Edom. Okay, the Lord said through Jeremiah, Jeremiah fifteen and three, I will point over them four kinds, said Yahabashimashai. The swords to slay, the dogs to tear, and the fowls of the heaven, and the beasts of the earth to devour and to destroy. So the swords to slay. Going into Esau Edom, coming in, um those spirits created for vengeance. And also just everyday Jake, everybody that's in the world. You're gonna have these certain militias. Again, watch the movie Purge. Uh, watch all of them, cuz you're seeing, you know, these movies are uh depicted reality. Okay, these things are actually gonna happen, be played out, the dogs to tear. So the dogs have always been around. Okay, the conquistadors use those those dogs to tear up the Taínos, okay, which were Israelites, okay? Um, you know, and now they have what, robot dogs, okay? And and they're showing you those different robots in these San Francisco and New York, okay? And they're stunning on people, and these are, those are gonna actually be weapons of destruction. Now, not those particular robots, but they're putting out the simple ones. Okay, to to for people to be like, oh, those are cute, you know what I mean? Oh, that that's a good thing, you know, we want, you know, we don't want terrorists. But who are the terrorists? Esau Edom, he is the terrorist. Uh, he uh, Esau Edom, um, Pedro Joe said that. What did, what did Pedro Joe? He said that, that white supremacy is the worst thing ever. Yeah, and that's right, but they're not white. They're actually Edenites. Cuz white is a false social construct that Esau Edom put in place to make himself inferior, okay, when he's actually the wicked. Yeah, so I'm reading this again. I read in the N O T. It says, I will send four kinds, and four goes into mercy, right? Of destroyers against him, says the Lord. I will send the sword to kill, dogs to drag away, the vultures to devour, and the wild animals to finish up what is left. Yeah, the vultures to be able to drag and and to eat the dead bodies, okay, that wild animals to be able to drag, to be able to eat, okay? This is also Ezekiel fourteen. Saki bear with me. Ezekiel fourteen and twenty-one, for thus said the Lord Yahabashimashai, how much more when I send four sword judgments upon Jeluzum. The sword and the famine and the noisome beasts, and the pestilence to cut off man and beasts. And isn't the Lord bringing certain pestilences? And isn't it gonna be in the ICBM missiles? Aren't they being uh firmished and being ready? Okay, these things are happening, okay? And also with the um, you know, the fifteen minute cities. It says um, it says implementation of the exclusion zones in G and fencing to restrict movement. Yeah, and travel, ability to control behaviors through military-directed energy technologies. Property and car ownership to be outlawed, evictions from farms and rural areas. Farms and rural areas to go gather people into the cities, digital passports being propagated of the World Economic Forum. And the World Health Organization are in the final stages of planning and implementation. They are tied to social credit score, and that's what I was saying earlier, the social credit score. So what you say and what you do will be held accountable. Okay, and that's, that starts with the Lord, okay? Uh, let me get that scripture. This is Isaiah. Isaiah twenty-nine and twenty-one, they make a man offender for a word, so they make a man offender for a word, so the things that you say, okay? Um. That man make offender for a word, Saki, bear with me. Isaiah twenty-nine, Saki, Isaiah twenty-nine and twenty-one, that make a man offender for a word. And lay a snare for him that reprove in the gate and turn aside the judge for a thing of not. So that's what's gonna be happening, is they're gonna be convicting people that are speaking against. Uh, the regime and the things that they're doing, the new world order. Okay, and this is gonna be able to um put people in these different camps if they um are not complying or they're not down with it. Which is gonna create a lot of uh people being deleted, okay? This is Psalms one oh nine and two. Psalms one oh nine and two, for the mouth of the wicked and the mouth of the deceitful are open against me. They have spoken against me with a lying tongue. So they're even gonna be coming with a lying tongue, okay? And that's what they're doing by calling us extremists, calling us radicals, trying to ban the Bible, okay? That's why there's gonna be what, a famine of the word. Okay, where you're not gonna be able to get this word and get this truth. Okay, that's why it's important to what um, you know, seek the Lord while he may be found. This is Psalms forty-two and six. It says, attend unto my cry, for I am brought very low. Deliver me from my persecutors, for they are stronger than I. Yeah, because Esau Edom has his military. They have their their super soldiers, they have their uh facial recognition. They're gonna have even our own families to be against us, okay? Uh helicopters, you know, you know, the list goes on and on, but we have Yahabashimashai, okay? When you read uh Romans uh eight. Romans eight and thirty-three. Yeah, in Romans eight and thirty-one, what shall we say then to these things? If the most high be for us, who can be against us? So no one could be uh um, you know, if the most high is for us, who can be against us, is, you know? Because again, the Lord controls everything, okay? Psalms one forty-two and seven, bring my soul out of prison, okay? So again, we're mentally and spiritually free. Okay, but we're praying to be um exiled out of this prison, okay, out of this what, this jail cell that that we're in. Because we are what, under our oppressor, we're under um, a a harsh dictator rulership, okay? And we're praying that we have what, one that's righteous, one that's profitable, which is our Lord Yahabashai. This is Isaiah fifty-one and fourteen, the captive exile hasten that he may be loosened and that he should not die in the pit, nor that his bread shall fail. Okay, and what is our bread? The spiritual bread that Yahabashai has given us, that spiritual manner. And that pit is the system that Esau Edom has put in place. Okay, then if you don't comply to his mandates, then you have to be uh put in these different prison cells or these different FEMA camps or these fifteen minute cities. To be able to be any, to to have any food, water or shelter, okay? Psalms forty-two and seven, bring my soul out of the prison, that I may praise thy name, showing you how important the name is. Okay, Yahab and Yahabashai, that righteous shall can pass me about, the righteous shall can pass me about. For thou shalt deal bountifully with me, okay, and read this in OT, bring me out of the prison so I can thank you. The godly will crowd around me, for you are good to me, okay? And the Lord is good to us because he sent forth his holy prophets to have the knowledge, wisdom and understanding, that can be able to comfort us with that spiritual bread. The spiritual understanding of what is actually going on, the actual truth, knowing the truth shall what, set you free. This is Psalm sixty-nine and fourteen, deliver me out of thy mirror, and let me not sink, let me be delivered from thy hate me, out of thy deep waters. Okay, and the deep waters is what, Esau Edom coming in like a flood, okay, coming in with his what, uh super soldiers. Okay, when you read um Psalms one twenty-four. Okay, Psalms one twenty-four and. And four, it says. I'll read this whole thing. It says Psalms one twenty-four and one, it says, if how, if it had not been Yahabashimashai who was on our side, now may Israel say. If it had not been Yahabashimashai who was on our side, when men rose up against us, they had swallowed us up quick. Then when the wrath was kindled against us, then the waters, which the waters, when you go to Revelation um seventeen and fifteen, Revelation seventeen and one. Those waters is what, uh Esau Edom, okay, and also what the waters are known as the sea, which are the people, the military. The waters have overwhelmed us and the stream had gone over our soul, then the proud waters had gone over our soul. Bless be Yahabashimashai who had not given us prey to their teeth, and their teeth is what, their military. Okay, our soul is escaped as a bird out of a snare of a fowler, okay, and a fowler is what, a bird catcher. Okay, the snare is broken, yes, so the trap that Esau Edom has has been broken because now Yahabashimashai is able to save his very elect. And and he will, it says, and we are escaped, our help is in the name of Yahabashimashai, it made heaven and earth, so our help is in the name. And that name is a strong tower, the righteous run into it is safe. Psalm sixty-nine and fifteen, let not the water flood overflow me, neither let the deep swallow me up. Let not the pit shut her mouth open upon me. Hear me, oh Yahabashimashai, that love and kindness is good. Turn unto me according to that multitude of tender mercies, okay? Yeah, the mercy mercy of tender mercies, because the Lord has mercy on what those that seek him, those that are repenting, those that are trusting in Yahabashimashai. They're gonna be able to be saved out of all the destruction. Right? It says, your digital currency will be turned off or depending on compliance score UBI, universal basic income. As a state-controlled allowance, forcing compliance by restricting access to food, money, services, education. Yeah, because they're gonna be controlling the less desirable, um, if things are less desirable. Okay, that's what the Fed now or the fintech is all about, is um, when you buy something, they can be able to say if if it's, you can buy it or not. Okay, and that goes into Revelation thirteen and sixteen. Okay, above all will enable climate lockdowns to be implemented easily, arbitrarily indefinitely, yeah, indefinitely. The real agenda of fifteen minute cities is to monitor and control everyone, everything. In summary. In coming days, council will receive electronic info packet which will contain the text of degradation and other items. We, the citizens of Aurora, wish to enter in a meaningful, respectful dialogue with our elected members of council. Yeah, but so the elected member councils are nothing but workers of Esau Edom, okay, they work for Esau. Simple as that, okay, they're not your friends, okay, um. And this is all leading to second Ezra's fifteen, okay? Let's skip around, second Ezra's fifteen and five, behold, said the Lord, I will bring plagues upon the world, the sword, the famine and death and destruction, okay? And that's what we see being played out. Fifteen, for the sword and the destruction drawth nine, and one people shall stand up and fight against another, and swords of their hands. Yeah, so Egyptian against Egyptian. What are they fighting over? Uh, you know, fighting against their government, you know, class wars, civil wars. Because they think that the government is um, not doing what they're supposed to, you know, their vote didn't count. Which your vote never does count, because these are already elected officials, okay? But there's gonna be what, a sedition. Sixteen, for there shall be sedition among men invading one another, and they shall not regard their kings nor princes, and the course of their actions shall stand in their power. So sedition goes into revolt against the government, okay? So even what we're doing right now is prophesying against this devil, okay, but we have the covering of Yahabashimashai. While the rest of the world, they don't have the covering, okay, so which is gonna lead them susceptible to falling for these traps and these snares. When Esau Edom offers them uh something in vain, okay? For there shall be sedition among men invading one another. Yeah, so going into people's houses, uh uh pillaging, okay? One another, they shall not regard their kings nor princes, and the course of their actions shall stand in their power. A man shall desire to go in the city and shall not be able, yeah, because these cities are gonna be uh um death zones. But also you're gonna have to have credentials to be able to enter into these different cities. For because of the pride of the city shall be troubled, the houses shall be destroyed, and many shall be afraid. Yeah, so many shall be afraid, okay? Through much tribulation we shall enter to the kingdom, okay? It says, a man shall have no pity upon his neighbor, but shall destroy the houses with the sword and spoil their goods because of the lack of bread and for great tribulation. Yeah, for the lack of bread and for great tribulation. Okay, and this is gonna be happening throughout the four quarters of the earth, particularly what Babylon the Great, okay? Let me read this again, a man shall have no pity upon his neighbor, but shall destroy their houses with the sword and spoil their good. Swore their good because of the lack of bread and for great tribulation, yeah, for great tribulation, because Esau Edom's gonna be coming in like a flood. Okay, this is second, I'm in the right here, this is second Ezra's. Sixteen and seventy-one. There shall be like madmen sparing none, but still spoiling and destroying those that fear the Lord. For they shall waste and take away their goods and cast them out of their houses. Then thou should be known who are my chosen, and they shall be tried as gold in the fire. Then shall be known whom my chosen, which is what, the very elect. Hear, hear on the love, said the Lord, behold, the days of trouble are at hand, and the time of Jacob's trouble, the hour of temptation. But I will deliver you from the same. Be not afraid, neither doubt, for Yahabashimashai is your guide. So the Lord is what, our guide, to be able to what, seek out salvation. Okay, in that day, you're gonna know who are the chosen, okay, cuz the chosen, the only ones are gonna have food, water and shelter through the wisdom that the Lord has given them. Revelation two and ten in the N O T, it says, don't be afraid of what you are about to suffer. The devil will throw some of you into prison to test you. You will suffer for ten days, but if you remain faithful, even facing death. I will give you the crown of life, and that's what it's all about, the crown of life. And right now, we have it, is the understanding. But we're praying, Adama and Ratan, that we're able to what, endure to the end, and the devil is Esau Edom, he is the deceiver, okay? And ten goes into a perfect number of days. It could be ten, it could be less, it could be more. But the Lord, if you hold on to that crown, is gonna be able to uh save you out of the impending um dangers. So with that, khalay Yahabashimashai bashimakakwadash, shalom to let, kwame ashala.